Good afternoon and welcome back to our Facebook audience for this City Council, District 10 candidate forum. We are very pleased and honored to have with us the two candidates in the runoff for District 10, Mr. Ezra Johnson and Mr. Clayton Perry. Welcome to both of you.
Excuse me. I shouldn't have had that chocolate. Pardon me. My name is Juan Antonio Flores. I am chairman of the San Antonio Chamber's Legislative Committee for 2017. It's my honor to be moderating this candidate forum here. In an effort to engage a broader, more diverse audience, we are broadcasting on Facebook Live. To be clear, the Chamber does not endorse candidates as an organization. Rather, the purpose of these forums is to inform the community about the mayoral and city council candidates and their positions on the key issues relating to economic growth and development that are of importance to our membership. As a Chamber of Commerce, we have a membership of over 2,100 businesses. We together employ half a million people in the San Antonio region. We are, as a city, the seventh largest city in the country, one of the fastest growing cities in the country, and therefore, a collaboration and partnership between our business community and elected leadership is vital to advance the interests of our membership. And so that's why we do this. So we have about 25 minutes to have this discussion, and as we just discussed, we'll begin with a two-minute introduction. Before we start it, the candidates drew numbers to decide who would get to go first. And Mr. Johnson, you go first.
Thank you. Well, my name is Ezra Johnson, and I'm a fifth-generation Texan and a lifelong resident of San Antonio. I am the husband of Deborah for 18 years, who's a public school teacher at Lee High School, and I'm the father of two beautiful, talented young women who also go to school here in San Antonio, and I'm a semi-professional duvet player. One of the other things I do is I'm a law partner at Ull Fitzsimmons Jewett in Burton, where we employ eight people. So I've got extensive small-business leadership experience. I'm also an adjunct professor of law at St. Mary's University, where I teach criminal procedure to the law students, and I teach the American legal system to the master's degree students. I'm board-certified in oil, gas, and mineral law by the State Board of Specialization, and I'm also an active member of the St. Mary's Law Alumni Board. I've spent the last nine years of my legal career working on building consensus among groups that have diametrically opposed interests. I think that that's the right skill set for city council, getting the consensus that's necessary to get the resources that District 10 needs and deserves. And I want to use the practical and analytical experience that I've gained as a teacher, as a former public school teacher, as a law professor, and as a working eternity and small-business person to get District 10 what it deserves. Thank you.
Thank you, Ezra.
Great. Thank you for having us here today. I too am a fifth-generation Texan. I'm from a small town called Gettys, Texas. Went to Texas A&amp;M after I graduated from high school and graduated from A&amp;M with a building construction degree. From there, I went into the Air Force and spent 21 years as an Air Force civil engineer, dealing with infrastructure, basic infrastructure, everything from roads to buildings to everything that's there to operate that base. Did that for 21 years, retired as a lieutenant colonel, and then I went into private industry where I was actually working as a contractor for the Air Force. Did that for another 13 years and retired. I've been retired for about four years now. I've been here in San Antonio for 26 years, and throughout that whole time, I've been very involved in my community, in my homeowners' association as a board member and president of the homeowners' association. Then I went on into the Northeast Neighborhood Alliance, where I've been a membership secretary and secretary as well. Spent there a number of years, and I've also been involved in District 10 activities in several boards and commissions. So overall, I've been doing this for 26 years here in San Antonio, serving my neighborhood, the District 10 communities and neighborhoods, and District 10 as a whole. As chairman of the Building Standards Board, I was on the bond committee for streets and sidewalks, and also served on the sign ordinance rewipe. So I've been involved, very involved, in District 10 over the years and hope to continue that as a District 10 councilman.
Thank you very much. Okay, I want to start with questions that have been prepared by our Public Affairs Council, and I'm going to look to alternate as to who gets to respond first, but I'll start with you on this one, Mr. Perry. Right after this election, when the new council is seated, one of the first tasks at hand will be negotiating or prioritizing for the next fiscal year's budget. What are some issues that you consider priorities?
Well, the number-one issue in District 10 is crime. We've got a rising crime problem in District 10, as well as the city of San Antonio. So my number-one thing is to go back and take a look at our budgets. We're short on police officers, we're short on first responders, EMS and fire, and we need to go back and take a look at that. And I'm going to fight to get the prioritization in the budget. And by the way, those positions for the police officers are already in the budget. They were just, that budget was moved away and saved by using overtime instead of hiring full-time staff. So we just need to get that money back into the pots where it belongs and fund the right number of policemen and increase our EMS and fire also. We're a little over 200 policemen short, and we need to increase our academies, make sure that we don't cancel any academies and keep that pipeline coming. And I want to see about offering incentives to policemen who are getting ready to retire, stay on for another six months, maybe a year, even longer, because we've invested in those people, and they have done a great job in protecting us. I want to keep them on until the academies have time to catch up to what the requirements are and be able to keep up with the day-to-day retirements and people leaving the force. So that's going to be where I'm going to focus in on the budget to make sure that we're providing the right security and safety people to protect us.
Thank you.
Yes, so my major budget priorities from the beginning will be twofold. One will be public safety, and the other will be infrastructure. Mr. Perry is correct. Because of various issues with staffing within our police department and also the fact that we're underserved in terms of the number of ambulance crews that are available at any given time in the city, one of my first budget priorities will be finding the additional funds necessary to start alleviating that problem. Secondly, District 10 has fallen behind in our infrastructure maintenance, and because we've fallen so far behind, we really need to focus on prioritizing regular maintenance within District 10 and start looking at, you know, there are several roads and intersections that need a lot of attention that have gone neglected for sometimes up to 20 years. I think that's because the approach we've been taking in District 10 is clearly not working. That's why we've fallen farther behind than some other districts, and so I want to change that. I want to bring a collaborative approach to the budget process and start talking to representatives from other districts about what we can do to bring District 10 the resources it deserves.
Very good. And someone anticipates the next question, so I'm going to give you a chance to elaborate a little bit. I'll start with you, Mr. Johnson. So, you know, as members of city council, city council members have the prerogative and the privilege of leading and advocating on issues that affect us citywide. However, your first and foremost responsibility is to your constituents in your districts or looking specifically at District 10, a little bit more about what some district-specific priorities are for our viewers that you would want to address. You know, these may be things that require a fiscal response, you know, most things do, right? But just in general terms, what are priorities for addressing District 10? We'll start with you.
Well, thank you. So I am a huge proponent of the Safe Officer Program. I think that that's an amazing, I'll use the word again, it's an amazing program that allows for community policing work. It does a lot of good in terms of building trust between the community and the police department. It allows individual officers to be assigned to neighborhoods so that they can learn the neighborhood and the issues that are inherent, special to each neighborhood, so they can address those issues on an individualized basis. It allows the city to liaise with the citizens, the cellular own-patrol program, which has been very helpful. So I'm, for District 10, I really want to see our Safe Officer Program enhanced and maybe even expanded. And before we can do that, though, we've got to fill those underserved positions, those positions on police department that have not yet been filled yet, so we can bring our safe officers back. And I think that that would be a great program for District 10, because District 10 loves safe officers.
Mr. Perry.
I agree. I agree. Again, I go back to the crime issue. That is the number-one issue in District 10. And again, I'm going to fight to get the numbers back up to where they belong in District 10 and make sure that those numbers stay in District 10. What we've gotten into, these major crimes, where those resources are actually being pulled and moved around outside of District 10. And I want to make sure that we keep those resources in District 10 to service our neighborhoods. Let's face it, District 10 is mostly neighborhoods, and we have lots of people out there that are even scared to come out of their houses during the day and at nighttime to even open their doors for visitors. In walking around the neighborhoods, I've found that quite a bit, where you had to really try to get them to open their doors. And that's a direct result of crime and a direct result of not having enough policemen patrolling the neighborhoods. And I'm going to get those numbers back up to where they should be and keep our neighborhoods safe. And transportation is another issue. There's a lot of roads within our neighborhoods that are in terrible shape. I had to get a four-wheel-drive vehicle just to navigate around District 10. And, you know, it's terrible that we have lagged behind in getting the resources necessary to keep our infrastructure up to speed. And that's my background. That's my wheelhouse. That's what I've done my entire careers on the construction side.
Well, you've now anticipated the next question, and I was about to, I was getting ready to say that I was surprised that we hadn't gotten to traffic and transportation yet, but you just did. So elaborate a little bit on that, Mr. Perry, as to how multimodal transportation. And drawing from the question prepared by our Public Affairs Council, multimodal transportation, the potential role for high-speed or passenger rail of some sort and managed toll lanes as options, how does, your perspectives on how any of that might fit in to solve it?
I can tell you that's no on both of those tollways and both of those questions. The multimodal transportation, if you go back to, the city already has a plan that's called our Comprehensive Plan, and part of that is transportation. And in there, it talks about some major thoroughfares here in San Antonio along with the bus system and upgrading those major thoroughfares to allow additional traffic and relieve the congestion points that we have. And I'm for that, the bus rapid transport. That's great, but we need to take a look at our routes. That's very important. I, sitting in District 10, there is a need for buses, but you see a lot of buses going every day that are empty. And so we need to take a look at the schedules, and we also need to look at the marketing, how we market the bus system here in San Antonio. It's always been looked at as kind of, you have to be, you know, not able to afford a vehicle, that kind of thing, to get around and use the buses. We need to change that marketing concept. We've done a great job in Visit SA. We need to do the same thing with VIA and how we market it. And look at the routes, make sure that they're adequate to serve the needs of people. We are growing. We do need to look at that. I am against rail, light rail, against toll roads, and I'll fight against those. Those are big-ticket items. And by the way, in that Comprehensive Plan, VIA still has in there for a $5.1 billion program to put light rail here in San Antonio. We need to change that, focus in on the things that we do have and what we can improve, and one of those is VIA, the bus system here in San Antonio.
Mr. Johnson, transportation options.
Sure. Well, you know, I would say to the voters of District 10, if you think that your roads have deteriorated more rapidly or are in worse shape than in other parts of the city, you're right. They have, as a matter of fact. And I think the voters need to ask themselves this question: Why? Why is, in spite of the fact that District 10 has one of the largest voting bases, why hasn't the current leadership in District 10 been able to leverage that voter power into better roads and infrastructure? I think that's because we have not been doing our best to have a seat at the table when it comes to the allocation of resources for our roads, and I think that's because rather than take a collaborative approach, the leadership in District 10 has taken an isolationist approach, and that's clearly not getting us what we need. So on top of getting District 10 a fair shot at an allocation of resources, I would say that, you know, in order to address our congestion problems, we need to start looking at smart solutions to giving people an option to get their vehicles off the road, so we relieve some of these traffic congestion issues. I'm a big proponent of what's called a bus rapid transit system, a true bus rapid transit system, that takes the buses out of the flow of traffic, that creates dedicated lanes and dedicated street signals so that they can move through the flow of traffic without interference. And that's going to require going on to our Comprehensive Plan and creating that rapid transit system within the corridors that we're working on developing right now. And that will also give us the space that we need if later on down the road, if San Antonio's population density will someday support a light rail system. I don't think we're there yet, and that's why I want to do bus rapid transit first, but I think that's a good pathway to getting that process started and allowing for the kind of dense development that's going to allow us to bring more people in without increasing our congestion problems.
Thank you both of you for very thorough responses to that question. We talk about mobility relates very directly to job growth and economic growth. So a question, and I guess maybe, you know, somewhat from a philosophical perspective, what is the role of a city, what's the role of the city council, of city council members in developing and implementing strategies for job growth in San Antonio? And I'll start with you, Mr. Johnson. What are some ideas you would have in that regard, if that's something you'd support?
Sure. Well, yes, I think the city council and city leaders should have, should definitely focus on what we can do to increase job growth. I think we can do that in a lot of ways. One, I think we can create a transportation system that works. When you look at what do employers want in a city, they want the ability for their employees to be able to get around, so it's a place that employees want to move and they want to live. I think we need to look at our workforce training options. You know, SA Works is a great program that I'd like to see, you know, expanded and continued here in San Antonio, that, you know, make sure that we're working on having our schools and our business community kind of be on the same page in terms of what we need to do for workforce development, and the city can create the space that's needed to make that possible.
Thank you. Mr. Perry.
Yes, this is a very interesting question that, I've been in business my entire life, and both with the Air Force and private industry. You know, more jobs, you need more businesses. I think you need to go back and peel the onion back a little bit. Let's take a look at, let's ask the tough questions out there. Why aren't we attracting these larger businesses? It's been 20 years since we got Toyota. We've lost some major businesses. We need to peel that onion back and take a look at what issues are there in San Antonio. We didn't get Amazon. We didn't get Caterpillar. We didn't get some of these large businesses that offer good-paying jobs for our citizens here in San Antonio. I want to go back and peel that onion back, ask the tough questions. Why aren't we competitive with Cigane, New Braunfels, the explosion that's happening up there on 35 outside of San Antonio? Why aren't we getting those inside of San Antonio? So I want to ask those tough questions. Go look at development services. Is it too tough to build here in San Antonio? Do we have too many regulations? But one of the things is outreach. We need to continue that outreach to those companies that are looking for good places to work at. San Antonio is a fantastic place to work. We've got great people here in town. Yes, I'm all for the education system, and we are funding the pre-K for SA program. We have the community colleges that were, just passed a large bond on that. But I look at these other areas outside of San Antonio. They're not investing those kind of resources into education, but they're still getting these great businesses there. So we're doing something inherently not attractive to these businesses to come to San Antonio and not the surrounding community. So I want to ask those tough questions, get to the bottom of it, and find out what issues we have that are keeping the businesses from coming here.
Thank you both of you for your answers. So an item or an issue that may or may not be related, you know, to what it takes, you know, what's the infrastructure or the framework that we need in the community to attract good jobs, housing and affordable housing? You know, we, we're beginning to live the double-edged sword of our success, right? We see property values rising sharply in this community. That's great in so many regards, but it also presents its challenges. So the 2017 bond program that was just approved, $850 million total, included $20 million for an affordable housing pilot program. What are your thoughts on this? What are other initiatives or strategies that you would propose that would help us address the issue of having affordable housing in San Antonio? Let's start with you, Mr. Perry.
Well, let me correct you on one item. It's not an affordable housing portion of the bond. It's a neighborhood improvement. And the difference is, it's not necessarily affordable housing. It's neighborhood improvements, which could include businesses, warehousing, businesses, that kind of thing. So it's not affordable housing.
It's broader than just the housing?
Yes. What it is, the city will purchase a plot of land, they will make the improvements to that land, they'll bring in utilities and have it all ready for improvements to investors to come in and improve that area, and it's not necessarily for housing.
Okay.
But let me tell you about District 10 issues. It's not about affordable housing. We have many, many hundreds of apartments that were built 40 and 50 years ago. They're becoming dilapidated, and it's creating some big issues with crime, drugs, that kind of thing, and that's where we need to focus in District 10. We need to go in there and do either upgrades, and I'm not talking about minor upgrades, major upgrades, because, again, they're 40 and 50 years old. They're at the end of their life expectancy, and we need to make those improvements for District 10. So I'm not looking, I'm not worried about affordable housing right now. I'm worried about all these old apartment complexes that we have in District 10, and that's where I want to focus in, to provide adequate housing for our citizens in District 10.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, your question, housing?
Sure. Well, again, I think you're exactly right, and I've been talking about this extensively. I mean, what are we going to do when we've got, we were expecting 1.1 million more people to come into San Antonio in the next 20 years, but we're only adding about 7,500 housing units each year to our existing stock. Clearly, we've got to do something to incentivize further smart development within San Antonio rather than continue to sprawl further and further outward. And I think what I'd like to do is I'd like to start with taking a top-to-bottom review of our building construction regulations. Right now, the average cost to a housing unit just on regulations alone is about $85,000. I think that that is adding too much to the cost, potentially, of our homes and housing units, and that's not making it possible to build affordable housing. And I think I'd like, in order to encourage smarter development, I think we need to start requiring some set-asides for workforce and affordable housing. I'd like to see a set-aside of 5% to 10% on new projects for affordable housing. On the issue of dilapidated apartments in District 10, that's why I'm excited about this Neighborhood Improvement Bond. It's a pilot project, and I'm hoping that it's proof of concept, because then you could take that concept and use it to restore these dilapidated apartment complexes and make that a neighborhood improvement, and, again, add more housing and more affordable housing in District 10 and in San Antonio.
Great. Thank you very much. So we have a couple of questions from our viewers, and so I'm going to ask the last two questions, and they will be questions from viewers. So starting with you, Mr. Johnson, back to job growth and economic development, specifically looking at the tech industry.
Yes.
How would you work towards ensuring that our city is at the forefront of attracting companies in the technology industry?
Education, education, education. I think to answer Mr. Perry's question about why San Antonio may be missing out on some of these employers, it's because employers want an educated workforce. And I think San Antonio needs to do more to help facilitate creation, the creation of an educated workforce. And I think that that would help the tech industry as well. Also, you know, I think we should continue to support initiatives like the AT&amp;T Fiber Program or the Google Fiber Program. We need to create a tech infrastructure that makes it possible to attract, you know, that kind of business. They need the ability to do their work, and to do their work, they need a modern tech infrastructure. San Antonio can be doing a lot more to facilitate that.
Mr. Perry, on attracting the tech industry to San Antonio?
You know, I think that's great, and the city has made some big strides in attracting tech industry here to San Antonio, and I support that. But let me turn this around a little bit. I will be the only military person on city council. I'm the only one that understands the military and be able to talk to the military, and I want to prepare the military for another background. People seem to forget that that's coming in the future, and we have to start preparing for that. We haven't recovered for the last, for the last background. Since 1995, we haven't recovered those job losses yet. So we need to start preparing for that background. And with my military background, experience, I can do that. Iowa actually sat on the special team that we formed at Brooks Air Force Base back in 1995 to prepare for that background, and we were successful. We kept Brooks open, which was a huge victory. Unfortunately, Kelly closed, and then in the next background, you know, Brooks closed. But I was on that first team that kept Brooks Air Force Base open, and that was a big success. Everybody was very happy about that. And so I know what it takes to get prepared for that background, and it is coming, and we need somebody on that council to be prepared with the military for that upcoming background.
Thank you. So the last question relates to an issue that has been front and center at our state legislature over the last 140 days, or like I said, will be 140 days as of Monday. And this is a question that has been asked by numerous viewers, not just during this forum, but in earlier forums as well. And the question is, what is your position on the so-called bathroom bill and what its impact to San Antonio might be? Mr. Perry?
Well, I can tell you that that's being worked up at the legislature, and the Texas legislature. And if we, if people don't agree with something, they need to get with their legislators. That's being worked up there, and I'm saying that we will follow whatever law that they come up with here in San Antonio. I'm a law and order type of guy, and if they come out with that law at the state, we will follow that law.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson?
Well, I know that currently that's going through several iterations in the legislature. I take the position of Speaker Joe Strauss. I think that that is a solution in search of a problem, and I oppose it for that reason. And also, the concern is, is that if something like that passes, then it would have a very, yeah, very negative economic impact on San Antonio and on Texas. So for both that reason and for economic reasons, I think that that's something that we shouldn't be focused on right now. As we've said, you know, we've got a lot of issues here in District 10 we need to focus on. We need to focus on our public safety. We need to focus on our infrastructure, and we don't need outside interference that's going to be potentially harmful.
I want to thank both of you for your very thoughtful and thorough responses. I want to thank both of you on behalf of our entire membership for taking the time to be here on a Friday afternoon at the start of an important holiday weekend. I think that shows a commitment and interest on both of your parts. I am certain that our viewership in District 10 and throughout the city have found this very insightful and informative. And so, and I sense maybe, Mr. Perry, you had a little bit more to say on an issue. You're going to get a chance to do that right now, so to close, we'll turn to you for your closing two minutes, and then to you, Mr. Johnson.
Sure. Just real quickly, I agree that we have very important issues in District 10 to attend to: crime, transportation, taxes. There's a whole long litany of things that we need to pay attention to. But I am excited about this opportunity. I've had a whole career, my whole life, has been about public service and giving back to the community, and I want to continue that here in District 10. And I am very proud of the endorsements that I've gotten. I have Councilman Gallagher's support, former Councilman Soules, Clamp, Jeff Webster, Lyle Larson, and Jimmy Hasslocker. They're all supporting me, and I'm very proud of that support. They have continued to be involved in city They have continued to be involved in city and District 10. And they're involved to the point of attending and being involved in the Northeast Neighborhood Alliance as well as District 10 meetings, and making sure that they continue that life of service, just the way I want to continue my life of service. And, you know, I also have community leaders. Most of the community leaders in District 10, our neighborhood associations, they're supporting me as well. So I do have a lot of support. I'm proud of that support, and I hope that that translates to the rest of the voters in District 10 to vote me on the council. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson?
Well, I want to thank everybody for taking the time out on this weekend that we're coming up on to have this forum. And I want to take this opportunity, since it is Memorial Day, to thank our veterans and our active-duty service personnel who are out there right now protecting us. I'm definitely a believer in the statement that freedom isn't free, and so thank you all for your service, and I look forward to celebrating your service this weekend. I just want to say that, you know, as a former public school teacher and as an attorney with a public service bent, you know, I've spent my career working on building consensus among the separate parties. I'm going to bring, I'm going to use that experience to bring folks to the table, to get District 10 what it needs. And in order to facilitate that, I'm already bringing in support from a multifaceted group of folks from around the neighborhood and from around the district, and I'm very proud of that support. And finally, I would say that, you know, San Antonio is a great city, it's a great place to live. I have enjoyed, I ascribe a great deal of my personal success and happiness to my experience growing up here in San Antonio. I want to continue that for my children, and I want to continue that for the residents of District 10, and I'd be honored to have your vote. Thank you.
On behalf of our membership, again, thank you to both of our candidates, Ezra Johnson, Clayton Perry. Thank you for being here. Thank you to our audience, and stay tuned for our final candidate forum of the day that will begin at 4:15 PM for the District 2 candidates. Stay tuned.